So you ready, Dave?
Yes, we are rolling.
Okay. Um, good evening, calling to order the Marquette City Planning Commission for Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. We will go ahead and start with our roll call. Commissioner Andres?
Present.
Commissioner Brooks?
Sorry, present.
Okay, Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Middlefelt?
Here.
Commissioner Primo?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Cardillo is here. Our agenda, do we have any comments on the agenda? Can we get a motion to approve the agenda if not?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Erin Andrews?
Second.
Commissioner Larson gives us our second. Commissioner Andres made the motion. All in favor of approving the agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing as how there's none, the motion carries. We have our meeting minutes from the last meeting. I wasn't there, so uh, does anybody have any comments on the minutes? Do they look okay? So in that case, we can approve those by consent. At this time, we can address any conflict of interest, but there's not really anything on the board, I think, that would involve a conflict of interest, so I think we're probably good with that. So then we can move through. We have no public hearings this evening. We have no citizens wishing to address the commission on agenda items, although I guess you guys are all invited guests, so I don't think that that's the same. Then we have no old business, no new business, or citizens wishing to address the commission on non-agenda items. So then we can move on to our work session, which is item A, our downtown density and maximum building heights conversation.
Enjoy, I'll share my screen, but um, for the agenda materials, and I thought maybe I did sit in on the DDA's last meeting and heard the part of the meeting where this was discussed. And I think it would be beneficial if you would preface the conversation with some of the rationale that was used to justify the recommendation to increase height of buildings downtown from 60 to 74 feet. There were several items, issues that were considered and are part of that rationale for a larger building height. And historically, there was a higher building height. We have a list of about 10 buildings downtown that exceed the current standard by quite a bit, including a couple that are over 100 feet tall.
Do you want me to address that, Dave?
Yeah, if you would, while I'm getting my screen up.
Sure, so um, basically, you know, as a response in some part to the the community master plan, which addresses sort of smart growth, and you know, a desire to focus on downtown transportation and and density in the downtown area, as well as conversations, you know, that involve the city commission. We felt that it was appropriate at this time to look at raising the building heights in the in the central business district, which would allow people to go up to five, five stories it's based on, right? Five or six, depending on on your sort of floor-to-floor height. And um, the reasoning was basically that we feel like increasing the density in the downtown area, you know, would basically just contribute to, you know, a more robust downtown environment. It would help sort of justify some of our initiatives towards increasing transportation in the downtown area. And I think, you know, the feeling was that it would allow people, you know, developers who are looking at some of these properties downtown to, you know, really maximize their their lots. And I think the hope on our part, you know, in this sort of second phase, is that we'll be able to sort of add a bit of granularity to this such that we can, you know, make sure, not make sure, but encourage development to happen in a way that sort of takes into account the concerns of of what we want, so that we can have sort of a vibrant downtown area. I think sort of the the top things that are on my list and that had to have come up with the group is probably affordable housing, whether whether that's addressed as low income or sort of the missing middle component of it. I think, you know, parking is something that's always, you know, an issue with the downtown and you know, that that commercial, commercial vibrant street face is is another piece. And I really think all those those three sort of components are are critical. You kind of need them all for to have the downtown be successful. I think, you know, if you're asking people to live in a more urban area, having the commercial presence sort of offsets maybe living in a smaller place. You know, you sort of need the parking component, so I'm kind of interested in sort of looking at all three of those things. Dave?
If I could add to that, the the idea of developing more density downtown is also an idea that is supports development in the right place. You know, greenfield development, developing out along forested land south of the city, and you know, that's going to happen to some extent, but you really want to encourage development where there's already infrastructure and where it will make, have the most benefit. And with the 74 feet, the rationale is five stories that, in a 74-foot building, pans out to be 12-foot stories, four 12-foot stories, and a 16-foot ground-level story, which is fairly typical. So that gets you to 74 feet, and that's kind of the the model with some flexibility built in there for, you know, the ground floor being more or less with the other floors being adjusted a bit. But it basically lets you have five stories where 60 feet is a pretty difficult construction job for five stories.
Yeah, I think um, absolutely, the the sort of conversation about kind of encouraging growth, where we would like to see it so that there's not as much pressure and that we can sort of justify maybe doing less development or lower impact development on the sort of outer skirts, reducing sprawl is definitely something that appeals to the to the commission.
So the idea then, the the planning commission wanted to discuss, I think, with the with the DDA is the idea of basically like a density bonus, where if you're developing a five-story building that, you know, exceeds 60 feet, then maybe we're looking at the requirement for not necessarily an affordable housing component, but at least a housing component, some kind of a residential component, that could be anything from some number of units to one floor, which, you know, Dennis Stackwitz and I discussed that a little bit today, and you know, one floor doesn't kind of really necessarily make sense in terms of flexibility for the developer, but maybe some number of units does make sense. But that's, that's kind of the, I think, the one idea everybody could sort of agree to on the planning commission? With something along those lines?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly think there's the most amount of desire to see housing incorporated. And I guess, you know, our first steps really are to also kind of hear from from you guys, so that we sort of, I mean, you probably have more directly the ear of of the actual owners of the properties that have these properties. And I guess from my end, you know, I think we all have this desire to see this take place. It's in the sort of specifics of how we're going to carry it out that that we really need to figure out the details. So at this point, I think, as Dave mentioned, we're sort of trying to figure out what what's on the table. And I think that the housing piece is is one that's sort of front, frontmost.
Okay, I have a couple of questions if I could jump in. First of all, have you guys seen an increase in the demand from developers looking to go higher than the 60 feet? Is that something that's come before the the planning commission that perhaps is an impetus behind this that you're seeing?
Only one.
The one, there was one project that went before, and it didn't come before the planning commission, it went before the the zoning appeals.
Border zoning appeals, right? But that brings up, as you know, community planners, we're not really doing our job if we see something like that that comes forward and it it kind of begs the question while we're updating this land development code, you know, is this standard outdated? That standard has been in place for many, many years, probably at least four decades. That 60-foot standard. And one of the arguments the developer made to the border zoning appeals was that building five stories with today's building technology is it's a very difficult thing to build five stories at 60 feet. And it doesn't allow you that flexibility to have a ground-level story that's higher or has an atrium, you know, that, and that's kind of the typical construction in this era.
Okay, thanks. And then the second question that I had is more timeline-related. Now, I know that the recommendations are going before the city commission in January, it's my understanding. So is this part, this particular recommendation part of that overall recommendation at this point, or are we, are you looking to hold off on that until we look at maybe the density bonus component, or if there's some sort of requirement that should be involved as well?
So this, the 74 feet is going before the city commission, just as a straight raise on the cap, but they will, none of this that we're discussing today in terms of density bonus is part of that.
Okay, so realistically, then, if this does get approved by the city commission, then the 75, or the 74 foot, I'm sorry, would go into place without having any sort of requirement related within it at this point in time, and then it would come as another amendment down the road? How would we want that to look if we wanted to put any kind of requirement in place?
Yes.
Correct in understanding that?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Larson, sorry.
One of the other pieces that we, it was loosely discussed, you know, as well as that, you know, if there was a density bonus, maybe that would even allow you to build higher. That, so allow you to build higher than that 74 feet, but that would be up for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, as Dave mentioned, we did talk about this at our most recent board meeting, and the impression that I got from the board members and Jeremy and Tony, feel free to jump in here as well, is that the DDA would be supportive of the 74-foot, the increase, just because we do have limited boundaries, you know, we can't expand outside of our district, and so at this point, we do want to encourage that density and the residential development downtown, and so it does seem like the next logical step would be to build up reasonably so. And so I would, I would say on behalf of the board that we would be supportive of that recommendation and also of continuing the dialogue as far as any kind of incentives that we want to put behind that.
Mr. Otway?
Yeah, so I guess I just want a little clarification from from your standpoint on exactly the way this is going to look going forward. So as we interpret it, is it still going to be 60 feet? However, if you, you know, meet the standard of of residential, you can move up, or is it going to be anyone can go as high as they want, and you'll get a bonus if you go, you know, with residential?
Well, we don't know yet, but it will be it will be, you know, there'll be a cap to, currently, once we put the 74 feet in place, at that time, you'll be able to build to 74 feet. If we go back and we sort of try to add some nuance to that, then it might be sort of you can get to the 74 feet if you have certain components as part of your development.
Okay. I appreciate that.
As Commissioner Larson was saying, potentially, that could include going even higher based on certain additions.
Right, and that makes total sense to me. I guess my fear with it is 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 that a couple developers may be able to slip through the cracks before we're able to kind of get that in place, and that's kind of the thing I would like to avoid, especially in the in the central business district. If we can, if we can add housing there, especially for developments that are pending, I think that's a great thing, as opposed to, you know, allowing something to happen while, you know, one person may get a break and another one might not, so I do worry about that a bit.
Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of comment, or I guess respond to Mr. Otway's comments about, you know, what we were thinking with this. I think we all sort of learned about this idea about density bonuses as a, when we were talking about the increase to heights, and we thought, well, this is a great opportunity to try to create some kind of policy mechanism to encourage. I mean, I think our conversation was really affordable housing or that mixed middle. You know, I was reading that great report that the consultant put together with you all, the DDA, and I was surprised that the average income of the downtown, people who live in that downtown district tends to be lower than other areas, and so, I mean, maybe we want to change the demographics of who's living in the downtown district, but if we want to respect and honor those people, it might be, I think, behooves to think about affordable housing. But I guess more directly to Mr. Otway's comment, like, we don't have this all buttoned up. I think that was why I wanted to reach out to you all to just see, hey, this is an idea. What do you think about it? And, you know, how would we implement that? What would it look like? There's still a lot of questions that we don't have the answers to at this moment in time, but wanted to hear from you all to see what you thought, what that could look like, and is this something, a direction we should pursue?
Commissioner Brooks? You're on mute, Commissioner Brooks.
Sorry about that, I want to talk about the whole affordable housing. Being that these developers are looking at real estate as a premium in the downtown area, I don't see that that would be smart to have affordable housing included. You already have Pine Ridge Apartments that has quite a bit of density in there. You have Snowberry Heights down there, you have the Janson House. I think these developers that want to purchase this property are paying a premium dollar, obviously, because it's downtown district. They're not wanting to put affordable housing in. I mean, that that just doesn't fit in their whole scope of things. I like the idea of creating density and created added density bonus, but the fact of the matter is, if you're adding that to a project, it's coming at a premium dollar, so you're not going to be building affordable housing. And also, I want to clarify too, also the old orphanage too. So you have plenty of actual affordable housing in the downtown area right now. So I think, I think we should just scrap the whole affordable housing thing, because that's going to be a deterrent to the actual developer. Thank you.
That's the whole, that's what a whole density bonus policy is, aims to do, is to create incentives so that they will. I mean, that's the purpose of doing it, but, and that's the demand. I mean, we've seen study after study about what our community needs is affordable housing. So I, I think that that's at least part of the conversation about, you know, what does this mechanism look like? But I think that's the purpose of having a density bonus policy.
Yeah, but what's affordable, and how can you make, incentivize these people to make affordable housing? I mean, again, are you going to deter developers, because they've got to create this, you know, affordable? What is affordable housing? I I think when you got to look at that, you know, you got to look at the community itself, and you got to look at where you're actually building.
There's a committee meeting right now, an ad hoc committee.
Right. And, sorry, Mr. Otway, let me let you speak, and then.
Yeah, Joy, thank you. Um, I mean, basically, obviously, we could all probably sit here and debate the affordable housing thing, you know, from start to finish. It seems like every board I've ever sat on, it's it's one of those things, and as I've ran for city commission, it's it's the same thing, it's it's an issue in this city, for sure. I love the idea of incentivizing developers to do so, but I, Mr. Brooks is making a very good point. When when housing is so expensive in Marquette, it's hard to believe that any developer is going to want to do that. But I think this is a good opportunity, as you all have pointed out, to maybe word it, so it it makes sense for somebody to do affordable housing. I think that's kind of where most of this group seems like they're kind of steering that, and I like to hear that. But as opposed to, you know, continuing with the affordable housing discussion, my big question is parking. We don't have parking in the downtown area right now. If we add housing to the downtown, you know, I think we have, what, Becky, about 300 residents downtown right now? If we add, you know, buildings that are going five, six, you know, seven stories possibly, and adding housing to those, we don't have enough parking for the thousands of people that work downtown now. So I I I definitely hope that you guys take that into consideration when you piece this together and and make sure that that's addressed as well.
I I think that's really great input, Mr. Otway, and I, you know, I tried to bring that up, I, because I guess for me, I I think what I, you know, I think there's like really three elements that are really critical to this being successful, which is, you know, if you're, again, if you're asking people to live in these denser, more urban environments, you know, they're necessarily giving something up. And so having parking, having a vital commercial street, so that we're not having people just put parking at the street level and sort of losing the vitality on that street level, as well as the residential, I really think you need all three pieces, and I think any developer knows that their property is going to have more value if they have all three of those pieces. You know, just just speaking with people I know that live in urban areas who have not had, you know, who are living in their small, tiny apartments and don't have any of the benefits right now of of all the trade-offs that they've given up to do that, you know, it really brings home that that you need your downtown to sort of have all these different threads working together, which is why I would like to see this sort of done in a way that kind of really takes all of those things into account. And I guess the other piece, just going back to that earlier conversation, is, you know, I think for me, the idea is that, like, we're going to the 74 feet, and that, to me, is our sort of act of goodwill in saying, you know, here's, we want more density, we're we're responding to the developer, you know, to sort of being able to develop bigger buildings. And then whether it's as a component of that, or as Commissioner Larson said, going higher than that, you know, I think that's when I feel like it would be acceptable to say, like, okay, well, we'll let you do this thing, which is going to be a more dramatic change to our skyline, but, you know, you have to then contribute something fairly substantial, whether it's, you know, low-income housing or middle-income housing. So I do think, you know, it's, it's got to make sense, and and I mean, right now, we're still in the very early stages of trying to understand what the values are, what the priorities are, and then there's going to be a lot of granularity that that has to enter into this, absolutely. Commissioner Larson, did I see?
Aaron has had his hand up for quite a while.
Sorry, I can't, where are I, oh, okay, your, your hand goes into the background of your thing, and I can't see it, I'm sorry.
That's fine. While we're talking about affordable housing, we also need to talk about accessible housing. Frankly, the only accessible housing that that is new, that is in the area, is the old orphanage, and the only accessible apartment is on the fourth floor of the building. And they only have one, which is
crazy.
A concern all the way around. Um, if we're going to do this, we need to do this right, we need to do it with all things considered, so that definitely needs to be in the conversation.
That's a really, that's absolutely, and I think that should be a priority from the get-go. Was there somebody else that I missed? Commissioner Dunn?
Um, I'm not sure how much, you know, I haven't seen a lot of these before, as far as a density bonus for for height, or, you know, for affordable housing. I I'm trying to figure out how we're going to try and accomplish everything, and and this may not be the place to try and do everything all at once. So I I'm hoping that we can get a little bit more focused as to whether we're going to look at, you know, obviously, accessible housing can go along with affordable housing, but then you throw parking in the mix, and not, you know, now you're trying to do a lot with with one little bonus, and I don't know that it's going to be financially worthwhile. And it also may not, it's going to be pretty, it's going to be pretty cumbersome to to get that all in there too. So um, I I'm hoping that we can focus and and realize that that we're not going to be able to get to every single one of our wishes and desires just based on a on a height bonus. So for whatever that's worth, um, I I I'll throw my little favorite topics out there as well, but as much as we may need parking downtown, I'm I'm hoping that we can try and figure out a way to to make it so that it's not surface parking, because when I look around, I see an abundance of surface parking, a lot of which seems like it doesn't, it doesn't get used throughout the entire day. So there's certain times where where things are packed, but then there's a lot of time where there's a whole bunch of parking lots sitting empty. And so I think that that shared parking and and things like that need to be looked at and and seeing if we can facilitate and incentivize those somehow as well. And again, that might not go along with what we're talking about tonight as far as a height bonus, but it is just something to to throw out there and keep in mind. And that's all I'll I'll get into for right now. Thanks.
Commissioner Andres?
That is why we need to prioritize what we need, want to do, and need to do, so that we have an order of things, of what we need to do first, what we need to do second, and so on and so forth. We can't do everything, we know that. It's impossible to do everything, but we need to prioritize what we're trying to do, make a plan, and then execute that plan.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yeah, I agree with Michael Dunn, I also agree with Commissioner Andres. I just think the whole housing thing is kind of ridiculous. You're talking for an increased height, height requirement. As we already know, 300 residents live downtown, increasing actual residential down there is going to take away from what these developers want to do. There, you know, you're talking about 14 more feet, when you have several buildings downtown that are, you know, in excess of 100 feet. I don't think, you know, let's just go ahead and agree to the 74 feet. I mean, it's it's not bad compromise. Now, if you want to talk about adding density, why don't you talk about adding density over the 74 feet? You know? And and if you're going to go over the 74 feet, maybe have underground parking or something like that. But, you know, I'm I'm right on the same page as Aaron and Michael that, you know, let's let's not try to do too many or complicate things. I mean, the the thing that we're really trying to look at is the developers trying to develop in that spot is purchase property. Where you were looking at, we already spoke about this property, but it's not feasible to actually do this project without, you know, with that 60 feet, so, you know. Isn't that why we're here from the get-go?
Well, yeah, but I I guess I feel like part of this conversation is talking about, you know, do we want the bonus to be, and I think Commissioner Larson brought this up, do we want the bonus to be on top of the 74 feet? Do we want it to be as part of the 74 feet?
That's what I'm talking about, why don't we go ahead and, you know, go with the 74 feet? But if they're willing, if they want to go higher than the 74 feet, that's where they have to come in with But if they're willing, if they want to go higher than the 74 feet, that's where they have to come in with a compromise for parking. Or a compromise for, for residential housing or something like that. But, I mean, I think we should focus on the 74 feet, say, yeah, geez, God, that makes perfectly good sense, you know, uh, for a developer. But if there's a project that really wants to go higher than that, that's where we throw in that, you know, maybe they need underground parking. Maybe they need to have so many units of residential available. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks.
The, the last thing in my experience that, that builders look at as an afterthought is accessibility. So I think we need to give incentives for accessibility as well. And you don't see very many people in, with significant disabilities going downtown. Because the bus system stops at eight. It doesn't run past eight o'clock. We can't access certain areas because of just the logistics of getting to the area. So I, I really think accessibility needs to be incentivized as well.
Uh, Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, just a question regarding accessibility, but do, do ADA guidelines, are they, are they sufficient? Do they work? Do they, I mean, is that take care of what, what we need or is, is there something more that we need to do?
Well, so I, I think, you know.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Joy.
There's accessibility, so like anything, any new structure that would be built above, that would be at, say, 74 feet or even less than that. Um, would require heli, uh, elevators a- and such. But I think what Commissioner Andres is talking about is actual apartments that are built, and correct me if I'm wrong. But actual apartments that are built with accessibility, you know, accessible showers, accessible hallway widths. So I think those are two different things.
The building in which I live, which is prolonged housing authority, is the only. One story, it's not even a one story, it's ground level, full apartments with accessible showers. You know, and what, whatever else. And there's only 16 units in this apartment complex. And the, the other ones I know of are, um, you have Snowberry and you have, uh. Oh. Crap. I can't think of them off the top of my head, but, um. There are apartments that, that tried to do accessibility, some do it better than others. And I think more of, as the population ages, we're going to need accessibility. So rather than thinking of it as an afterthought and, oh crap, I'm now 60 years old and I need accessibility. And Marquette isn't accessible, then we're going to obviously lose population to of that older demographic.
Thank you. Dave, did you have something?
I just, uh, want to remind everyone that when, whenever there's a site plan proposed, you guys get to, you're, on a building like that. You're going to have a major site plan review and, uh. Downtown, there are parking requirements that require, uh, 1.25 parking spaces per each residential unit. So there's not, uh, you know, it's not a high number for providing parking spaces. Um, a lot of development now, the parking is being put underground. And the proposal for the building that was going to be built at 135 Main Street was for parking underground. There, the, the code doesn't require parking downtown for other uses to be provided on site. But it does require parking to be provided on site for residential, so. That's, that's, and that, this is one of the things, I've been sitting in on all those housing committee, the ad hoc housing committee affordability committee meetings. Um, they've been talking about that a lot. One of the things I think they're going to be trying to see if it's something the city will go for. Is to try the opposite side parking. Where the winter parking ban does not completely require us to not park on the street overnight. You park on one side one night and the, it, it, really, if we're going to increase housing density in the city, there's not much else we can do. You've got to let that happen or at least give it a try, it seems to me anyway. Because there's just too much on-street parking that's forfeited and we have too many problems. But, um, yeah, don't forget, you guys get site plan review, um, and can put conditions on approval. So, um, site plans should not push too much parking off the site. But the, the affordability, the housing affordability issue has also been a very enlightening conversation. They've had a lot of, um, people from around the country participating in these meetings. And it becomes apparent really quickly that, you know, like some of the research I've done on density bonuses shows. You can only really encourage affordable housing with density bonuses when you have lots and lots of units. When you're talking hundreds of units. Because the cost of housing is, is just so, it, the, the cost of labor and of materials. Has, has gotten to the point that, you know, the average house in the United States is now over $400,000 for a stick-built house. Um, it, it's really impossible for builders to build something that is below market rate. In a place where the real estate is going to be as expensive it is, as it is in downtown Marquette. Unless they were given the land, that's about the only way they could make that happen.
What's the, what's the city's current funding source for, for parking? Any kind of parking or any kind of funding source?
Uh, I can speak to that for downtown in that we receive the parking revenues from parking permits and then the meters and pay stations. And that's essentially what goes into providing the services for our parking system. So those revenues paid for the snow removal, maintenance of the block street ramp, the elevators, stair towers, pedestrian connectors. Um, power for the parking lots, striping of the line painting, like those revenues 100% are reinvested into the parking system downtown.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I'm thinking, and I don't know how, how or if it would be incorporated in this conversation. But it, it seems like I've seen fees and lieu work in the past where, you know, there is a parking requirement. But a developer can, can choose to pay a fee instead. Those fees get collected by the city and eventually are used for, uh, you know, uh, uh, another, um, another parking structure. Um, that the city can then control and, and put where they want, uh, which, which has some advantages. Um, you know, the, being able to, to put the parking right where you want it is nice if you can, if you can get the land to do it. Um, but, yeah, just, just an idea that, that popped into my head. And I don't know if, again, I don't know if that relates to what we're doing tonight or not, but, um, it, it seems like it's been effective in other places.
Yeah, I mean, it, it would be interesting, you know, overall, it seems like we, we just need quite a bit more information. Um, I mean, I'm guessing you guys, as part of your downtown, your master plan, you studied parking. I, I mean, I know you guys did some studies in terms of increasing the parking areas you have, whether adding more levels. Um, and I'm, I'm guessing that's based on the density that we have now. And if we're proposing, you know, potentially having even greater density, you know, that would be something we'd probably want to further study to see. How much more parking we would need, um, in addition to what you guys have already potentially considered.
Right. The parking study, study that we had done, um, actually says that with our current levels of supply and demand, that we do have adequate supply. Um, but of course, looking into the, the near future and beyond, especially as development happens. Or, um, with that South Main Street parking lot, if that development, um, comes to fruition, then obviously we're going to lose that parking. And so that's really where we have to look is as, as these developments transpire. And, and the impact that, that is going to have ultimately on our parking, that would need to consider additional parking supply. Again, like you said, Joy, whether that be adding that third level onto the block street ramp or pursuing an option for a new parking deck.
Commissioner Larson? So Commissioner Andres, sorry, I didn't, he keeps getting lost in the background, Aaron, I'm sorry.
Eric, everything, go, go ahead, Eric.
I, I was just going to ask, does anybody know what's going on with the hospital, old hospital parking area? That is currently chained off because it's being unused. Do we know what's, has any movement happened with that? And this is, could be a question for Dave, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay.
I know they tried to get Northern to buy it, but Northern didn't want to buy it because I think it's got some structural issues maybe or something. But, um, I know they tried to get Northern to buy it at one point.
Commissioner Larson?
So, I, I guess trying to, trying to figure out what, you know, what, what a, that bonus might look like. You know, if Dave is suggesting that hundreds of units, I mean, you know, that's certainly not a hundreds of units category, you know, in that's, in that. In that limited space in which. The developer is looking at, you know, it's, you know, you can build a reasonable sized building, but it's not a hundreds of units sort of building. Uh, and so, I mean, I guess, you know, that, you know, begs the question, do you want to, do you want to just kind of change for a particular building type? You know, saying, hey, if you want to build housing downtown, uh, you know, just straight out, like affordable housing or housing with a percentage of affordable housing. That you can go up to a particular feat, but that would be, that'd be kind of that, the, that, that would be the, the reason for building. It's like, this is, this is, we want to build this sort of complex downtown, uh, as a result, you know, like Snowberry, you can match 90 feet. Or something along, along those lines. As opposed to a, I, I guess that's its own bonus of sorts, but it would be for a particular building category. Uh, and then I guess the other question there is that, are you able to say you're able to? Uh, this might be a commission thing and maybe this is what the affordable housing folks are. I mean, of course, there's a difference between affordable housing and low income housing. But saying that if you are building something that is in excess of 10 units, one of them has to be, or at, at some particular level. Like a certain percentage of the units that you're building have to be, you know, deemed affordable housing. I, I don't know if that's something that could be incorporated in, you know, to, to, to thoughts. But if you're building a 20plex, does that, two of them are affordable? I don't know what that, what that really looks like. And maybe Eric, Eric may have more, more insight on some of those things if, you know, around. But, um, I mean, that would be another option is just creating a category. So if you want to build housing, you, you get that, you get that. And it could be affordable and market rate at the same time, you would just figure out what that, what that percentage of mix would be reasonable.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yeah, let's be realistic here. There's not going to be anybody who's going to do any affordable housing downtown. Um, at the price of real estate down there and the available real estate downtown. I mean, for someone to do affordable housing, Dave hit it on the nose, you're going to have to build hundreds of units. So quite frankly, there isn't enough real estate available. What we're talking about is smaller parcels of land, we're talking about maybe some older buildings that maybe have an addition on to, um. There isn't, the real estate's not available down there. So, eh, in perspective to the Veridia Group that's looking to, you know, have this bumped up to 74 feet, great. You know, i- if someone, if you want someone to go over that 74 feet, you know, to maybe do some residential. It's not going to be affordable by any means, just because you're up and above maybe a view of the lake and whatnot. So I, I think we need to scrap the whole idea of affordable housing downtown, because let's be realistic, it's not going to happen. No one's going to develop that downtown. It's, it's just not available. Uh, real estate is very, very expensive in the city of Marquette, especially downtown. So it, let's just scrap the idea. I mean, we're, we're, we're. It's just not going to happen.
Just want to remind, like, uh, the purpose of a planning commission is not just solely to help, um, developers develop new real estate. I think the purpose that we're trying to do is look broadly at our community and say, how do we, how do we want our community to grow? And I think we all do want to see economic development, real estate development, but we also want to think about some of these other big issues that we've been talking about for years, which is, um, affordable housing. So I guess I'm, I like.
No, no, I, I totally agree with you, but downtown is not the area to do affordable housing, just because of the value.
Commissioner Larson's idea of saying a percentage, right? So you can charge whatever for like top views or, you know, whatever, but then maybe you have a percentage of the units. I like that approach because it provides, um, diversity, right? Because when we talk about, we've talked about needing to be more sophisticated and how we talk about affordability of housing. And I think one of the things is, um, the missing middle. And also, um, you know, just a wider range of options, so it isn't just, um, high income.
We did that with Grand View and they only built one.
They only filled one?
There's only one accessible apartment.
Okay.
In Grand View.
No, it's affordable housing, but he's talking about only one that's one that is handicap accessible, that has the ADA compliance, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Dave and then Mr. Adaway.
So I just want to remind the planning commission, you, you guys should be taking, you're not going to get any credit. But you, you deserve some credit for the fact that there is an ad hoc housing committee meeting. That, you, we put recommendations in that last master plan update in 2018. And I think some of the, that, that led to some more discussion, I think. And so, so I, you're not part of that committee, but your, your recommendations. Uh, on that topic, which largely came about because of the short-term rental issue in the city. Um, you know, that has kind of spurred this other committee. And so they're working on that affordability issue. And I, I think it's, it'd be wise to not go down that road right now and just let them come up with their recommendations. Because they're doing a really good job. They're bringing in lots of experts. And, um, they're going to have a preliminary report coming out next month. And I think they're going to work till June or so on a final report that's going to have their final recommendations. But it, it's, it's looking really promising and, um, you know, the, the, I think we're right in that, that affordable. What we're talking about is below market rate housing is probably unrealistic downtown. But there, that doesn't mean there's not a need for housing downtown or that it's a good idea. There's, but one, uh, another, off on another issue is, is there, you know, if we're talking about units downtown. We do need to address the fact that if those units are not designated as long-term rentals. Or permanent housing, that they could become short-term rentals. Or they could become intended, you know, maybe there's a need for a boutique hotel downtown. You don't want to necessarily, um, you know, take that off the table. So, um, there, there's o- other options besides affordable housing for downtown that do make sense. Um, there's a lot of housing that's been built down on the waterfront, but there's, you know, even if it's above market rate. Or market rate housing in the, in the downtown district, that's going to help the downtown as well. And it's, it's not a bad thing. People want to live, people are going to want to live down there. And there's people that are going to be able to afford to live down there.
Mr. Adaway?
Yeah, uh, I mean, Dave, you're dead on with that. I mean, I think that, you know, any way we can incentivize a developer to build something. You know, from the DDA standpoint, that really is, is great. You know, any type of development downtown is, is wonderful. You know, any type of development downtown is is wonderful. Um, we're all about economic development, obviously. I mean, I I think that the thing that I just don't want to get lost in this is that I hear just a lot of conversation amongst your group. And as an outsider, I'm wondering, are you guys having this talk right now just because of one developer? Or are we trying to look at this as a whole? Um, and I I say this as the the chair of the BZA that actually sat on listening to Veridia Group. You know, and I I think this is a very unique opportunity to do something different with the LDC. Um, and I I do question, uh, you know, in the whole review of the LDC, why this wasn't looked at prior and why it's now up for a change when you guys have said that there was only one person that's requested this. So it to me, as as an outside public person, I'm asking questions about that. Um, but I I do challenge you to definitely, if you're going to change it, make it beneficial to the downtown and to that district. Um, because it's a it's a golden opportunity to do so. Maybe even incentivize parking if you can't incentivize residential. We do something, I mean, I think it makes golden opportunity. I say that all though in saying that I do believe we need to find a way to get it to go up. We want, we want market to grow and it's going to have to grow up. Um, but i- it's just a lot of red flags as I as I listen to the conversations here, and I just wanted to point that out.
Joy, can I address that issue about, you know, the the planning commission? I I kind of brought this up with the planning commission and it was triggered by that BZA decision, but it's not, I mean, that's that's not what it's about. There's that just brings up the fact that we've got a standard that, you know, we're on our third amendment to the LDC that the in in less than two years. I mean, when this gets adopted, when those standards that the the new standards uh that affect eight different articles of the LDC get incorporated, adopted and incorporated into the LDC in January, that'll be the third amendment in less than three years. And that's because, I mean, it's a, it's kind of an ongoing project. It was such a big, we did the, we went through the whole revision of four ordinances, putting them into one code in 18 months. And there's just to do something with that much with a 350 to 400 page document, there are things that just didn't, we think didn't have time to magnify, put the magnifying glass on or even think about. That was one thing I think we didn't even talk about during the development of the LDC. I don't think we've really talked about the maximum building height downtown.
Well, just as somebody who was on the 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 ad hoc committee, as well as the LDC, you know, working with the planning commission. Um, you know, I think Dave, what Dave is getting at and what is definitely what I have observed in my experience here is that, yeah, it was, it was a huge undertaking during the LEC and it was a lot of change. We were mostly dealing with, you know, there was a lot of sort of changing the lot size or the lot width was sort of the the real sort of move towards greater density. Um, and and I, you know, a- at the time when we started it, there was pushback. There was, you know, oh, is this going to affect property values? Is is this the wrong way to go? And and I think what we've seen is that people are really supportive of it, like people feel really good about it. And I think, you know, between that and between, you know, sort of our changing city commission and just the change, like just, I can just say, like, my experience from everybody is that things have changed pretty dramatically in the time from just when I started a couple of years ago till now in terms of an appetite for entertaining these these ideas for increasing density. And we want to do it smartly, but but, you know, really, there was a lot more pushback just two, three years ago. And now there's this sort of attitude that that has shifted that is really appreciative of these these ideas of greater density. Um, and so I think, you know, that's that's how we are where we are. I I mean, you make, you know, it's it's very good to hear you say that, Mr. Attaway, and I appreciate. Um, but, you know, these things just tend to happen incrementally. Um, and we can only kind of push as far as, you know, the the group and the 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 community is is willing to kind of go with us.
And I I read the um, the BZA case that uh, for that property. And it it was just like a light bulb going off with the um, you know, the idea that 60 feet of what you can do with 60 feet. Um, it it has changed a lot, I think, in 40 or 50 years, the building styles and techniques. And um, and then started looking around downtown and did an inventory and the planning commission, you know, we've we developed a list of, I think, at least 10 properties downtown that are are more than 60 feet tall. And, you know, some of those are the most beloved buildings in in the downtown area. Um, Savings Bank, the landmark, there's, you know, we got a couple of buildings over 100 feet. You have the the courthouse is 80 something feet tall, the old city hall. So for whatever reason, the 60 feet was in place for so long, it just, it seems to that the times have changed. Uh, and that that standard and considering there's a lot of vacant lots downtown. It's really a limiting number. There's not a ton of people that are going to be, you know, coming in for permits once the height goes to 74. But the the fact is, there's a lot of vacant lots downtown and it that that's a lot of potential that could be lost if the the if we keep the number down that low.
Well, I certainly, I was gonna say, I certainly appreciate you guys saying that. Um, I know uh, many of my colleagues had questions regarding it. And I think you both just talking on that kind of clear some things up and I'm I'm glad you did so.
Commissioner Larson?
I was going to say that, you know, there we, there's few of us here anyway, that, you know, agreed that we should take this slowly. And maybe 74 is the right number, maybe 84 is the right number. Uh, but, you know, we thought we should take it slowly, not necessarily push it through. Because I think, you know, there is a little bit of push because there is a property that somebody would like to build on, even though, even if it's just one person. But, you know, there's a few of us who thought that we should take it slow, come talk to the, talk to the DDA folks, talk to some other folks, you know, business owners downtown. Say, hey, what do you think about, you know, this, you know, this item, you know, here? Is this, is this fair? And if we come back and say, yes, let's go to 74 feet, even if that's in another month's time or two months' time, you know, and let's, let's do that, then you know, at least we do our due diligence in doing so. Or is there an appetite for going higher than than the seven 74 feet? Yeah, because 74 was essentially the uh, that on that one lot was that they told us that was the minimum they could build to. And so we're, you know, essentially taking their that, you know, that number from the developer as opposed to kind of looking at, you know, what might be the right number for, you know, the DDA or for the rest of the down, the rest of the downtown. Uh, so I think there's several of us or a couple of us anyway, who at least said, hey, let's take it slowly and incrementally and and have a discussion, you know, like like this. You know, when it came, you know, we did vote on it and, you know, it voted that, you know, that, you know, the commission, the planning commission anyway, put forth, put the 74 feet, uh, you know, kind of in in front of us. Uh, but, you know, there are, that was one of the considerations that, you know, some of us have held.
I'd just like to point out too that we did, Joy and I met and Dennis Stackwitz and I met with Becky and the consultant for the downtown plan probably three months ago, and we discussed this issue at the time that this was one of the kind of issues that's was kind of rising to the top with the planning commission consider concerning downtown. And we kind of got a pretty good feeling from Becky and your consultant that, you know, a a higher building height is probably a good idea. So that that gave us, I think, more uh encouragement to go ahead with with that discussion further with planning commission ended up where we did.
So where do we want to go with this tonight? I mean, my understanding is we're just having a kind of a discussion, talking about priorities. We're not making any sort of decisions on this evening.
Oh, no, oh, no.
Yeah, I have a question for the DDA. I mean, do they think 74 feet is adequate? Do they, do they see a need for higher than that? I mean, uh, uh, by no means, I don't think any of us are experts on it, but I'm I'm sure the DDA is. Uh, what's what's their thought on the, you know, height requirements?
I mean, I'll I'll answer that. I mean, I think Becky and and Tony certainly jump in too. But, uh, you know, our our main goal with the DDA is is certainly economic development. We want the downtown to be thriving. Um, it, obviously, the way market has grown, it makes sense for it to start grow going up. I mean, there is only so far you can you can build in this city. Uh, there's a giant lake as we we are all well aware on one side. So um, going up makes a lot of sense. The number 74 to me, um, you know, uh, uh, as Mr. Larson has kind of pointed out, um, if if we're looking at 74 uh, and we're we're doing so, you know, potentially as as, you know, one developer has has said, that's the minimum they can go. And um, to me, I I don't know that there is a a number that everyone should feel comfortable with saying, yes, this should be the minimum standard. Because if we're going 74, why not go 84? You know, why not go 86 to to add that next floor? Um, especially if we're we're looking for promoting economic development. If if it's going to bring more money to the downtown, um, I think that's that's good, you know, for everything, especially if we have buildings already exceeding 100 feet. Why not make the uh, the code that we enforce, uh, you know, around that number then if we have buildings that are already peaking above that? Um, certainly, you know, geographic, we don't want to, you know, remove the view of the lake that's going to upset citizens. And it all depends on where you put that thing, that giant building that's going to go up. But I think each lot has its has its own uh, each lot has its own just kind of horizon that you can go up to. And I think that limiting it to 84 may not make the most sense or 74, I should say. It may make sense to go a little higher even. It's just one of those discussions for for you guys for sure.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Ratafsky.
Thank you. Um, first of all, thanks for letting us be a part of your meeting. Really appreciate it. Uh, my thought process coming into this was that the planning commission was uh, going to talk about a 74 foot requirement and then the bonuses would come if you wanted to go higher. Another thought process that I had coming into this meeting is if there's a developer that really wants a particular piece of property downtown and we have a code that says, or the planning commission sets the 74 foot limit and their building has to have 80, 86 or whatever, whatever it might be, they're going to come to you. Anyway, I would assume, uh, isn't that typical if there's somebody that has a limit? Or if there's a limit in in one particular code, they're going to come to a unofficial committee or council that says um, yes or no to their variance request. Am I correct in that?
Well. Go ahead, Dave, sorry.
So that's the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right, they would go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. But, you know, unless they can, you know, the boarding zone of the Board of Zoning Appeals and Commissioner Larson can probably speak to this better because he's served on it. But um, you know, it's not subjective. They have, you have to really show what is what is the standard, Commissioner Larson? You have to show that basically you're being deprived of something that somebody else has.
Right, essentially, and and Jeremy or Michael Dunn can also speak to it likely too. Uh, is is that, you know, there essentially has to be an existing land condition constraint that is, you know, not allowing you to meet uh, the the zoning. Height is just one of those weird things where it it's hard, it's it's it becomes an economic, potentially an economic thing, which is which we don't necessarily, which we don't take into account is, you know, the economics of, you know, uh, height. However, if, you know, there was, for whatever reason, there was bedrock or something on one portion of your land, or there was a very, you know, big slope on your land, you might be able to build closer to the lot line or build at a different in a different configuration. Uh, you know, because the land has some preexisting condition that is not conducive to development of that piece of property. I guess that's as simple as you can do it. So but height height was just one of those things where it, you know, there wasn't any of those other constraints going on. So it's it's really hard to say that the land was, you know, depriving you from, you know, building higher on that.
Yeah, I mean, unless it was a PUD is the only thing I could think is if if a developer were able to, but we've really restricted how you can do a PUD. And I don't think there would be enough property to do a PUD for any of these anyway, if you did want to do some sort of much more extensive uh, development. Commissioner Dunn, did you want to respond?
Yeah, um, just real quick, uh, the term I always use is unique hardship. And that's that's what we need to see um, when when we're looking at a a zoning appeal is that 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 property has to have some sort of unique hardship that other similar properties do not have. Um, but that being said, I I wanted to go back to Mr. Attaway's comments as well, uh, that got got me thinking and I I really appreciate his input. Um, but I I think a lot of you guys have heard me say this before, but um, I I think that what he's saying about each lot having sort of its own, its own height capacity makes a lot of sense. And I think that's one of the reasons why I brought up before that we need to have those view corridors or the kind of the, I always call them a 3D fly through. But Joy, you can probably correct me and tell me what they're actually called, but the
Visualization or?
Yeah, and where you can actually see from multiple different perspectives, what that building is going to look like with the with the surroundings and what that's going to do to the view for for surrounding properties. Um, you know, and that being said, I really wanted to have that be a part of any kind of major height increase that we're doing. Um, and again, I've got no objection to to 74 feet or or even higher. And I, you know, I would like to see that become a possibility in the downtown area. But we need to do it and we need to know what we're getting so that, you know, we don't end up blocking the view of our lake or blocking the view of um, Mount Marquette or, you know, any of the other nice things that we like to be able to see from the downtown.
Commissioner Dunn, that's actually, I did something I, you know, when you first mentioned it, I thought it was a great idea. And then I thought of all the challenges that go with it. But I think one of the ways we could phrase it to sort of have it, I guess the problem is when you think about it, like, we can't preserve the view from every single point. But I think what we could do in terms of these visualizations is maybe talk about certain view corridors and sort of put it on this, the applicant to to provide the burden of proof that you're not obstructing certain view corridors. So, you know, basically, you know, is it the view down Washington Street or the view down Main Street? And 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 use that as our way of saying kind of, these are, these are specific view corridors, you know, the view towards the Ordox, say, for for example. Um, and and we just want to have a visualization visualization to ensure that this will remain clear from this vantage point. I I think it's, you know, the challenge is just that, you know, this, these raised heights will inevitably block some view from somewhere. Um, and it can't be completely arbitrary. So how do we, you know, I had just been thinking about this, how do we sort of do this in a way that's clear and achievable? I don't, I don't know what you're.
Well, I guess, I guess my thought was that I want to, I wanted to stay subjective. Um, I I, you know what I mean? I I I want it to be part of the the information that they need to provide. But I don't know that we need to actually put something in code that stipulates a certain, any certain thing. I I I think the only thing that needs to be in the code is that it's it's a requirement that they provide some sort of visualization of it.
Um, okay, well, yeah, I mean, I think that's something we can definitely keep on the table as we are, as we're developing this. Um, all right, does anybody have anything else they want to add to this conversation? I think we've covered a lot of ground. Commissioner Larson and then Commissioner Andres?
I guess my question would be back to the the DDA on whether or not, so if, you know, so right now, you know, the recommendation for 74 looks like it's it's kind of moving forward right now that won't have any height requirements or or bonus densities or things like that that necessarily go along with it. Does the DDA have the means to bring up like discussion of how of either view corridors or height, you know, limitations that, you know, you would like to see, you know, with you, with members or folks that are downtown saying, hey, if we raise, if, is there, is there any appetite for raising building heights to 90 feet or 100 feet or whatever that that might be, if it's within, if it meets what your vision of the downtown would look like? You know, is that saying, hey, we could go up to 100 feet as long as, you know, we've got, you know, we want storefront on the on the first floor, you know, storefront where you can actually, you know, go into and then on floors. on floors, you know, three through ten, that's, you know, residential or whatever that might be. But is there an appetite for, you know, working with folks downtown to kind of doing a survey saying, hey, what is, what is desired down there? Uh, if height were to go up and is that something you'd be able to do?
Yes, I can speak to that. That's certainly something that we would be able to do. We communicate regularly by email with our businesses and um, I've really tended to use survey um, as a tool most efficient to do that. So we could certainly put something together and send that out and gather that feedback from the business community. Um, I don't, I mean, is that something that you would look for prior to the January consideration of the amendments or?
This wouldn't be part of the, the January amendment is moving forward. Um, so this would be this sort of next phase of, uh, looking at potential, you know.
Okay. So more information gathering at this point.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That information to, to move forward.
And I don't know that, I, I, I don't know that that's an official request, you know, to, to do so. But I mean, if it's, if it's something in which, you know, you want to consider, you know, additional density for something, the way that you would like the, the downtown to look. So I mean, so we can kind of think about what that, that might, that might be. Um, it, it's just, just kind of a, a question because I think that's the sort of input that I wouldn't, I don't necessarily feel comfortable with, without, you know, input from, you know, DDA and then plus, you know, the, the members downtown, so.
Mr. Ottawa?
Yeah. And, and Tony and Becky, obviously correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have a subcommittee for the DDA that is design and maintenance. Um, and you know, this is probably right along our lines, uh, to, to discuss that as far as in the subcommittee meeting. Um, you know, as, as, as far as Becky can, can poll some of the people downtown, we can have a further discussion in a, in a subcommittee meeting for that. Um, and I think it's certainly information that is, is right up Becky's alley to, to get for sure. So.
Commissioner Andres?
I think we, we definitely need to prioritize what we want to do in order to get a functional map of what we are going towards. So we can fundamentally knock off our um, goals and what we wish to accomplish. Otherwise, we're just going to spin our wheels and not really do anything.
Mm-hmm.
Joy?
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Primo.
Yeah, just a couple of things. They're talking about affordable housing and our group alone makes housing go up in cost. Um, just, uh, let's say you wanted affordable housing and now you gotta come up with a plan with twenty-seven different views from twenty-seven angles. You just jacked the cost up. I mean, we did the same thing at the last meeting. When my point on the fence was not to make them put up a Stoneberry fence, but that in our ordinance and all the crap we come up with, we say, oh, we gotta put a fence up. Well, a fence is a fence. It's not going to accomplish what you want unless it's built for the purpose that you want it there. That's just one. Two, you talk affordable housing. All the affordable housing in town is subsidized. Now, a group could come in here, buy the savings bank building and turn it into affordable housing. Because it'll be all government money. Basically, they put in very little. The government guarantees you're going to be a success. The government subsidizing your rent. So it really isn't, it, it's, it's not really affordable. It's subsidized. Nothing yet affordable, just like Snowberry. Snowberry, I believe, is one quarter of your social security. That includes everything. Some people get very little in social security. I mean, there, there's a lot to this and I think we still have to allow people to be innovative, come up with what they think is going to work. And if they're willing to spend their own money to do it, we should allow them to do it. And I thought when we came up with that seventy-four feet was pretty much what the city commission wanted us to do. And again, the city commission can overrule us and say, we're going to make it ninety-four feet. If somebody came in and said, we want it at ninety-four feet. I don't know why we're kicking this thing around so much. It just boggles my little mind. So.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Primo. Are there any other comments on this topic?
One more, Joy.
Oh, yeah. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
I built and lived in three different houses that had a beautiful view of the lake. Today, none of them have a view of the lake. And this is because somebody built a big building and blocked the view. It's because one of the other things with this planning commission are trees. Now, if I'm in now, my neighbor down from me planted big everything. They grow for two years. I can't see the lake anymore. I used to be able to sit on my patio. I could see the lake. Beautiful view of the lake. Same thing on the house I built up, uh, Hampton. Beautiful view of the lake. Today, the trees block all the view. So you could do a three-dimensional view of a, of a, of a view today. And tomorrow the trees grow. You can't stop the trees from growing. And they grow all the way down the block. I mean, there's trees down on Division Street that block the view from way up on the hill. So your view is not going to be guaranteed.
Is that, is that everything, Ms. Commissioner Primo?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I can't see you. So.
Yeah, I don't understand that either. Should be able to.
Um. Okay. Anybody else have any additional comments? Uh, Dave?
Yeah, I just, uh, like to say what, you know, Wayne makes a good point in that if you come up with standards that do increase, you know, the burden on the developer, but they don't necessarily result in anything that can uh, change the outcome of the development, it, it doesn't necessarily make sense. What, um, in the third street corridor, one of the things that was done, and this is an issue, I think that will come into play downtown with, uh, taller buildings is there's a standard in there to prevent shadowing of the houses that are next to the third street corridor. So if a development down in the, let's say where the Wells Fargo is, somebody bought that lot and they want to put up a four-story building, which was a proposal about three or four years ago that never went anywhere. Um, that building at forty-eight feet could, um, shadow in, in the afternoon, the shadow could completely shade out the houses behind it. So there's a standard in the code there that requires that once you're above thirty-five feet, uh, between, on the backside of that lot, the, the next level has to be stepped back so that there's a forty-five degree angle between the outside edge of that thirty-five foot plane and the next plane. So there's got to be this forty-five foot, um, or forty-five degree angle created. So you've got at least if it's a twelve-foot story, that step back twelve feet. Um, that could be something, that kind of thing could be something you could consider, I think, for a standard downtown with these taller buildings is, uh, just to, the try to at least be sensitive to the fact that there could be, you know, we could consider some kind of shadow studies of the downtown area to see where the shadows are cast at different times of the year. And make sure that new buildings like that aren't going to cause those kind of issues for people because that, that could be a real problem that's created with taller buildings. And that, that's the only one that really comes to mind. The view corridor thing, and I'd be glad to go down, you know, meet with, uh, the DDA sometime and talk about the zoning districts more with this discussion and look at maps because that's, that's an important thing to understand that we're talking about the district behind Front Street, basically west of Front Street. We're not talking about anything on Front Street or east of Front Street. That waterfront district actually goes right up front and both sides of Front Street are in the waterfront farm-based code district. So this isn't going to affect the view corridor of anybody on Front Street or, you know, looking to the lake. So pretty much it's already lots that are fairly built out. Uh, with the exception of those vacant lots that are basically were buildings that burned down a long time ago. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Dave. All right. Well, I, I think this is a great start to this discussion. I think, you know, there's a lot of kind of legwork we gotta figure out, um, but I think this sort of pulled a lot of the discussion off, onto the table. And I, I really appreciate, uh, Mr. Ottawa, Mr. Ratafsky and Ms. Finko, thank you for coming. Um, you know, we really wanted this to be a collaborative, uh, piece of code. So, you know, we don't want to be doing this without, you know, the input from, from our other um, associations. So thank you.
And thank you very much for having us and for soliciting our feedback on this issue. We do appreciate being part of the conversation. Look forward to continuing the dialogue as well.
Great. Thank you.
Hey, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for including us.
Okay, um, shall we move on to our annual report?
Sure. So, um, did you, uh, uh, how many of you had a chance to look at the email I sent out today with that in there?
Uh, I did go through it briefly.
I'm looking at the PowerPoint proposal right now. It looks fine.
Are you guys seeing my shared screen?
Uh.
Yes.
I'm having a hard time with this. Um, I've got to find it. I'm having a hard time with my.
Dave, I didn't see an email from you today, but I'm, I'm checking my junk right now.
Yeah, you know, one thing, uh, we had a, uh, uh, we switched our email system here at the city from out, from Gmail to Outlook recently and, um, that, uh, there's some screwed up stuff going on with mail and I, I had three of the addresses for you guys came back to me as returned when I sent the initial email out. And in that initial email, I had actually attached two PowerPoints, the same one twice instead of a PowerPoint and a PDF. So I tried to send that back out to people, the PDF. Okay. So I'm going to bring up the PowerPoint here. Sorry, I didn't open this before the meeting started. Okay. So it's really confusing because now you've got two PowerPoint images going on. But, um, you guys can modify this as you like. Um, but I thought, uh, just kind of.
Is it open? I don't see it.
Um, you're not seeing it? It says I'm. It says I'm screen sharing.
I see your, uh, your browser.
I see your, your explorer.
Exactly. Your explorer.
Wonder, okay.
I think, can you take it off screen share and go back on? Sometimes it just needs to reset.
Okay. Screen sharing is paused. Resume share. Okay. What do you see now? You see the PowerPoint?
Nope.
That was your file explorer that we see.
Uh, so I, okay. You see anything now?
We're just back to the main video screen.
So now try to share.
Yep. Here we go. Okay. Seen it now?
There you go.
There you go.
Success.
Okay. So, yeah, starting with the kind of intro, you know, this is the planning commission report. Then just a little bit of history about the planning commission. Now, if I do this from the, uh, let's see. Okay. So here's Joy's presentation of it. And then responsibilities of the planning commission. There's a few of these slides where I, I did this, where Joy would maybe go through these things one at a time. And then there's slides like this where everything's just there and Joy can address that you've got seven members. Got a member, uh, term expiring in twenty twenty-one. You've had two members resign in the last past month. And so you're going to be down to six members, uh, by February if other people don't join the commission before then. This is something you can leave in or take out. It was just a, uh, this is one meeting where everybody was, yeah, nine members, not necessary for sure.
Dave, I have a question. Does my term end at the next February meeting or does it end February first?
It's, uh, February twenty-first, I'm pretty sure is what.
Okay.
No, February fifteenth.
Okay.
So you, you would be coming to the first meeting. Um, and that would be the last one in February, I think.
Okay.
Uh, again, this is one where I don't think you need to read through it.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have to read through any of this. I'm just saying that I think, uh, with some of these things, it's probably better to kind of explain it because you know, commissioners aren't necessarily going to prepare ahead of time and read everything in their packet. Um, right? That happens once in a while. And then here's one with all the proceedings. Now, this is, uh, this is what I got as you're really, there's a lot of business considering you had twenty meetings. You go back and you look at, well, we had twenty meetings. Fifteen of those meetings on this page, fifteen of them had work sessions. Nine of those work sessions were from the LDC. So being that this is coming right before the LDC, there's a chance to talk about the LDC quite a bit, um, and kind of educate a little bit with this presentation, but you guys did a lot of stuff here with, um, considering you had one site plan review on average per meeting. I was looking back at a couple of the meetings, uh, the one meeting where the first cell tower. There were, there were like four site plan reviews on that one meeting in addition to, you know, s- uh, special land use and.
Whatever happened to the court case when they took it to court?
Oh, you guys, I, I have never informed you, I guess. Um, it didn't actually go to a trial. It was settled out of court, but the judge completely agreed with the plaintiff that the federal law was not, the city did not, uh, adhere to the, the federal laws and um, the, the court approved their site plan basically and approved their, their, uh, permit. So they've already.
Tower's up already.
They put the tower up in the last three or four weeks. And they're just putting the finishing touches on it the other day. Matter of fact, I went out and checked it. Um, there, Andrea and I verified that it was what they said they were going to build. And, uh, I communicated with Mary Dawson over there about that. Um, I had talked to her a couple of weeks before. And she was curious about whether the size of the antenna rack and the antennas were what was approved. And so we went out and, uh, got some photos and checked it out, checked the site plans out. But yeah, unfortunately, we didn't have much, um, much, a- any, any kind of room for negotiation with them because the judge completely agreed that this, the federal law wasn't met. That, so. And I did talk to Stackelwitz about whether or not we should even, uh, you know, have that standard in the code anymore. Or if we should try to put a different standard in there. You know, we didn't come to any consensus on that, but it's, um, it's something we probably should talk about. At the planning, the planning commission should talk about.
Yeah, that was my question.
Next round of LDC amendments. One thing, yeah, it, you know, just we're off topic here, but, um, one, one thing you guys could think about is putting a requirement in there that the, in a situation like that, in a gent, where their next to general residential, that they would have to do in, an appraisal of the residential property or something like, you know. But as, as Commissioner Primo pointed out, uh, he may have a good point that the value of properties based on what you can rent apartments for and not necessarily that it's gonna decrease the value of the property itself. I, I don't know enough about that, but something we could get into talking about at some point. Okay, so there's only a few more slides. Um, these are, you know, planning commission's accomplishments that I, I saw as standing out. This is in the past 18 months, uh, which the last presentation to this commission, the city commission was about 18 months ago. I think it was June, May or June of, uh, 2018, 2019. If anybody else had anything they wanna add here, this is this is just a draft. I think just the fact that you guys were available and to, for all the meetings through this pandemic is a pretty big deal. Yeah, nothing, nothing was delayed, which is, um, pretty amazing. Um, concerns for the next year, uh, the mobility issue is, uh, I, I saw Taylor Clip recently, who's now on the Mark Tran board, and he told me the director is retiring. And, uh, I tried to make time to talk with him before this meeting. I hope when we're gonna talk yes tomorrow about, um, the transit thing, but I think it's, uh, just putting this in front of the, the, the city commission now, it, and they're talking about transit certainly in, in relation to the affordable house, housing affordability issue. Cause it's certainly very relevant. And I'll come back to that issue here in a second, but, um, the Lake Shore Boulevard scenic corridor or something, I figured you wanted to probably impress on the commission again. It's an important priority. Uh, is there anything else that, you know, that, I think it's a good time to, for the, the planning commission to say, you know, we've done a lot of things with the LDC that address our, our aimed at, uh, to making it more affordable to live in the city and more, you know, offering some more flexibility. And some of those things are in the amendments that are coming to them next month, especially those with the site plan review for multifamily housing. We've, we've taken standards, um, and made it much more flexible for developers to get approval for the smaller multifamily housing. And with, um, you know, making ADUs, uh, used by, by right, um, is, is gonna make ADUs a lot more practical. Not necessarily more affordable or anything, but at least it makes it a more viable option for most people. Um, on the issue of climate change, that kinda leads into, uh, one of the recommendations here. But going from concerns to recommendations, I would say a recommendation would be on public transportation is to have a work session with the city commission and Mark Tran to discuss a specific route. And this came out of the Third Street Corridor Plan. There's a very specific route and I put a map in here of that route that you could skip to, um, on the next slide. Um, let's see. Is there a skip to slide? But, uh, we'll just go through these and that there's the bike route plan, which they got most of the phase one stuff done. That was just signs. Phase two is more signs around the NMU area, the, the bike routes. That the phase one is mostly down in the downtown district. Phase two is kinda the east side and NMU in between the east side and NMU and in South Marquette. Uh, and there's the street marking part of it. There, that's another phase of it that's probably gonna, you know, get dragged out because our public works and engineering departments, you know, public works in particular, they, they're not gonna wanna spend the money on the street markings if they can delay for a while. I'm just telling you what they, they want. They'll, they'll wanna do that. They'll wanna delay and incorporate it into the cost of a street reconstruction or a maintenance project, which makes sense for the city.
Dave, you're talking about the bike routes?
Yeah, for the.
Okay.
For the routes that require markings because there's, there are a lot of signs put up. They put up quite a few signs to, to lay out. These are routes that you can use now. But some of those routes are, have new bike lanes and new shared routes with the share-o markings. They're gonna need to mark those. I don't, I can't guarantee that's gonna be part of their phase two. I, I got a feeling it's gonna get dragged out for quite a while with the, the markings, but this is something just to impress on the commission. You wanna see the rest of the to that. And we can do a work session on that bike route plan if you want to, so you know exactly what we're talking about. Um, the long range planning for Lake Shore Boulevard relates to that study recommendation. Um, you can continue to tweak the LDC for the affordable housing recommendations that the city commission, like I said, by June, they're gonna get a final report. So, you know, that might include duplexes, uh, instead of being a s- a special land use, duplexes could become a permitted land use in the LDC. And that's one of the things that's probably likely to get pushed and that's one of the reasons I brought up that whole discussion about one side parking, uh, during the winter. Um, because I think if you're gonna allow duplexes in the single family districts as a use by right, um, we, we gotta have more parking. Just gotta find a way. And front yard parking doesn't really address the issue and probably creates as many problems as it solves.
I mean, Dave, that's such a, that's such a push forward in the conversation because it's always been the non-starter is, is the street parking. So the fact that that's even on the table to me is, is, is kinda big.
Yeah, well, the, that commission and the ad hoc committee's been, you know, it's something they've talked about and I think it's, I do think it's an issue that's gonna get s- a, a lot of attention and at least a serious conversation and bringing in the department heads to, to really talk about what it would take and you know, a one-year pilot project at least, it seems to me to be a reasonable thing for the city to undertake. Anyway, so then, um, there's this recommendation to, if you wanna go with this, to strike the fees for residential solar power. And that's tied to your concerns about reducing greenhouse gas emissions as a high priority. So, this is the transit route. You know, I thought it might be good to just kinda show them something and like I said, you could skip ahead to the next slide from that last one where we're, you get to this first issue and just talk about the transit route and just go right ahead to that next slide and say, you know, there's a, basically this is a a mocked up version of a little bit of a um, enhancement on the version and the dow- the new downtown plan that was adopted. And in my mind, this is a doable 30-minute route. Having been, when we did the Third Street Plan, we actually got a bus and we did um, a route to the old hospital up here around NMUs UC and just kind of, uh, you know, right on the, that side of campus and back downtown. And it was, it was a hard thing to do in 20 minutes during the summer when there was a lot of traffic in the afternoon. But this could be, it could be done in a half, I think this route's doable in a half an hour, but it's, it's a really tight, you know, half hour route and, um, there may be times when it's gonna go, go in 20 or 25 minutes and times when it's not. It's gonna take longer. But anyway, so I thought it would be good to at least kinda give them something tangible as a, hey, this is long-range planning and this is kinda what we wanna do, you know, cause we're the planning commission. We wanna show you some long-range planning ideas that, you know, get, maybe get somebody excited about something that they can take off with.
Commissioner Middlefield? You're on mute, Commissioner Middlefield. Commissioner Middlefield.
Sorry, sorry. I'm going back a couple of slides before you got into the detailed recommendations that, you know, the last bullet point. Um, yeah, the next one back. Climate change, what, what more can we do? Um, this might warrant more conversation, but back in September, I think it was, yeah, end of September, early October, um, the governor put out an executive order that Michigan will be carbon neutral by 2050, um, which was really exciting. And I think, you know, that's what the president-elect has been talking about, um, similar climate commitments and like trying to get states municipalities to come up with climate action plans. Um, and I know this is an idea that's been floated in other circles, but I wonder if that's not something we could at least put on their radar. And then I think that would also segue into, look, here's some specific things that could help us, but you know, there's, what else could we be doing and you know, if we could align that climate change, what more can we do? Like something about how can Marquette align itself with the governor's plan to make Michigan carbon neutral by 2050? I think would maybe, um, hopefully excite people, but also like give us more, I guess, structure to work within when we're talking about why we critically need to do some of these, um, you know, public transit, um, things and all these other things that kind of lead us in that direction. I think would just make a stronger argument, I guess, about why we need to do that. Maybe open a conversation about, yeah, what does Marquette 2050 look like in terms of, um, climate change, carbon neutrality and all that.
That's really good.
Just to make, kind of, make it a little, um, bigger picture, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah, I would be supportive of that.
Okay, I can, I can change that or I can add some language in there instead of what more can we do, uh, referencing what, what can we do to align with, uh, Michigan carbon neutral plan for 2050?
I can forward that to you, Dave, if you want me to forward you the language of the executive order.
Sure, that'd be great.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, I, I love that idea. And i- is there a way that we can turn that into a recommendation as well and have that? So the recommendation that, that you had on the next slide, it seemed accurate to me, but I'm, I'm wondering if it might not be too specific as well in that, I mean, uh, at least me, and I don't, I don't know how this needs to be presented to the, to the city commission, but like for me, I, you know, I wanna incentivize and, and facilitate energy efficiency and renewable energies any way that we can. And so I it, it's not just solar, it's not just residential and it's not, it's not just fees. You know what I mean? Like I just, I'm, I want it to be a, a bigger picture thing where I guess that, you know, like a climate action plan would probably be exactly what, what's needed there.
Like, like, would you rather see it say something along the lines of like reduce barriers to carbon neutral techno, you know, technology? And then, you know, as a bullet point, maybe then we see sort of strike permit fees?
Yeah, yeah. Um, but the, the statement I had was facilitate and incentivize renewable energy.
Okay.
In all the, it, renewable energy, comma, energy efficiency in all designs. So, you, you know, I guess, yeah, that's not, that's not the perfect statement either, but that's, that's what I'm thinking.
I think that works.
Uh, Michael Dunn, if you, if you think about something more, uh, specific, you know, forward it to me tomorrow. If, if you wake up in the middle of the night with something perfect or whatever, write it down. Um, I, I do need to turn this into the manager's office, um, by Thursday. So, if you guys wanna, you and Joy wanna talk more about what kind of language you want to put there, that'd be good too. Whatever. I'll be looking for something tomorrow though, and I'll, I'll, uh, Thursday morning, I'll be revising this for a final, you know, final review. So I got a little time.
Okay.
That's the last slide there.
Okay, that wasn't so bad. Um, okay, yeah, that, that actually covered most of the things I had down. Does anybody have any additional thoughts on this? When is, it's Monday, Dave?
It is 21st.
Oh, my God.
And you'll be doing the PowerPoint, sharing your screen from home.
Okay. So I'll have the actual PowerPoint and share my screen. Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have any further comments on this for Dave? All right. Um, sorry, let me get. Oh, gosh. I lost my agenda. Here we go. Um, all right. So I think that we can move on to, uh, commission and staff comments. So, uh, let's start with Commissioner Brooks.
Sorry, keep forgetting to do that. Uh, none here. I, I liked the discussions tonight about downtown. I think it was great to have the DDA, uh, join us, give us some insight and, uh, I really do like, uh, uh, putting some language into the, the report about, uh, 2050. You know, it'd be kinda neat to see if we could actually, as a city, become a carbon neutral before 2050. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Middlefield?
Uh, I agree with Eric. I like that idea. Like, yeah, let's be, let's be the leaders. Why not? Uh, no other comment.
Commissioner Primo?
Yeah. I love this climate change stuff, but, um, it'd be very nice if the climate didn't change. There'd be no Great Lakes, nothing, so. I think we're lucky that the climate does change. So, that's it.
Commissioner Dunn?
Nope, thanks.
Uh, Commissioner Larson?
All good, thanks.
Commissioner Andres?
All good, thank you.
And Dave?
Um, so there is a, uh, I just got contacted by somebody who is, um, was affiliated with the, um, climate CCL Climate Lobby. The full name, the other C.
Citizens Climate Lobby?
Citizens Climate Lobby. Who is trying to, um, organize elected officials and appointed officials into some kind of a, um, working group to come up with climate action plans. Just got this in my email box yesterday. So I know they contacted all of our city commissioners and, and several city staff here and county officials. they contacted all of our city commissioners and, and several city staff here and county officials and, um, so it'll be interesting to see what the response is on, on that. Um, so it's a good time to, I guess, reemphasize the need for this because other people in the community are, you know, you're not alone. Um, and so it's good to have more voices, um, in that conversation. Um, in addition to, you know, the, the, uh, Climate Adaptation Task Force is still a regular thing that's meeting, but it's not really pushing any particular recommendations for the city. But one of the things that happened at the last meeting of that group, which I'm, I'm a representative for the city to that was, um, Citizens Climate Lobby has been preparing to, to have the city adopt a resolution to, um, reduce its carbon footprint by a certain percentage or they, they're kind of still struggling with exactly what they want that resolution to be. But they're pushing in the same direction. Now there's a splinter group from the CCL, it looks like that's trying to be more specific about a plan. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's, um, uh, the other thing I'd say was, um, thanks, everybody for your work through the year. This is our last meeting of the year and, uh, you did a great job through this, through all of this. Uh, I really appreciate your volunteerism with this committee and, uh, if you know any other, you know, people that you think would be good for the commission, let them know there's some vacancies. It does get hard when you get down to six members to have meetings that are going to be reliable. So hopefully we won't be at six for long if we go down to six.
So it's Commissioner Ruiz. He's definitely done or is?
Yeah, Tony resigned, Jessica resigned. And unfortunately, we're going to lose Aaron to term limits.
Term limits, ugh.
In March, or in February.
Well, that will be a loss.
I know I already gave up my, my, my comment, but I'm going to take that back just real quick.
Go right ahead.
Uh, I know we don't, I know we don't necessarily like being compared to Traverse City, but Traverse City has, you know, they have adopted, you know, some climate goals and energy reduction goals and, uh, climate neutral, uh, 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 carbon neutrality goals. Uh, and so, and they're also a municipal utility. They also have a municipal utility much like we do. And so, um, you know, if anybody's interested in taking a look at, you know, what they're, what they're up to, some of the goals that they've, they've adopted. Um, you know, and that is really at a resolution of the city, the city commission level to give a little bit of bite and, or a little bit of, you know, hold to, you know, the orders that can kind of go down, you know, through some of their organizations. So, um, there are Michigan communities that are setting, that are setting goals and that also have municipal utility attached to them and kind of working in concert together. Uh, and I mean, whether it's 2025 or 2050, you know, important to have a goal in mind to something to work towards.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Dave, and thank you. I just, uh, from want to say thank you for helping us get through this and getting all the technology together for us. You know, you and Andrea put in so much work to keep, keep all of us giving us all the information we need so that we can do our, our part. So we really appreciate that.
Thanks.
Definitely been a learning curve for all of us. Um, all right, that concludes my comments. So, um, I adjourned this meeting and we'll see you guys all. I guess anybody who can come on Monday to sit in, that would be great, right, Dave?
Yeah, you can, I, you probably watch the live stream.
Okay.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, have a great Christmas.
Yeah. Happy holidays, everybody.
Bye, thanks everyone. Bye.
Good night.